This meeting is open, this is the planning board meeting. We have a quick agenda. There are only five items, but we're going to change the agenda a little bit. We're going to move up what would be the fifth item to be the fourth item. So it's a minor change.
I didn't want to work the lights.
Just to make things more convenient. We begin the meeting with an opportunity for public comment. If there's something that you wish to talk about that's not on the agenda, this is the time to do it. No. Okay, in that case, we'll go to the agenda. Paul?
Minutes. Madam Chair, I recommend approval of minutes to October 24, 2023, as written.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved, thank you.
Not on the agenda, so we can't discuss that, is that correct?
Right. Okay, so the first thing on our agenda is an approval not required on A and R. The applicant, Brianna Murray, a plan of land to adjust the property lines between two existing lots at 334 and 342 Hayway Road. Mr. Bunker?
Thank you, Director. My name is Tom Bunker, I'm a land surveyor, BSS design. We have this plan which basically swapped some equal parcels of land where this, the dash line through here is the existing property line and the proposed line comes, you know, down here and then up here. But it's not evident, this is the existing building, but it's not quite evident why we're doing this. So I'll show you a different one. So we had a plan that was going to go to the building department where they're going to remove the existing deck that was shown and then build a new deck and addition in this location. And so this new deck will be, I think it's 11.4 feet from the new property line to meet the zoning requirement, the setback requirement, and then we'll put the driveway entirely on this parcel. So the green is coming out of the lower parcel and being out to the upper parcel and the purple is being taken away from the upper parcel.
The cowboy swap.
Equal area swapped.
So the planning boards issue are whether or not it has the right frontage and it has access and it has both. Any comment from the planning board?
No.
No, but we have a motion then, to endorse.
I'll move to endorse. The plan of land to adjust the property lines between two lots at 334 and 342 Hayway Road without regard to buildability.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're all set, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, planning board decision. For Kenneth Sundman, for Robert P. Gillis, a site plan review application to construct an accessory apartment within the existing dwelling at 24 Green Pond Road. And is anyone here to go over this again? We've already seen all the drawings, we've already discussed it. We had requested a positive motion and we have a positive motion. Paul, would you like to read that?
Okay. Okay. I just want to make sure I got the right one. Draft 11/22/23, motion that the planning board votes to approve the application of Kenneth Sundman on behalf of Robert Gillis for the construction of an attached accessory dwelling unit to be located within the existing four-bedroom tri-level single-family dwelling on the 10,018 square foot lot located at 24 Green Pond Road under Section 240-12.2, site plan review of the zoning bylaw findings. The applicant seeks to convert the existing family room and one-car garage into a 510 square foot attached accessory apartment located on Level A of the tri-level single-family dwelling, which will be 39% of the principal dwelling. The existing office and bedroom, number four, on Level C, will be merged into one bedroom. Therefore, the property will remain at a total of four bedrooms, a three-bedroom principal dwelling and a one-bedroom accessory apartment. The application shows a marked 16-by-30-foot area for accessory parking located within the existing oversized crushed shell driveway which complies with Section 246.6B and Section 240-14.1E of the zoning bylaw respectfully. The planning board finds that the information provided by the applicant conforms to all the requirements and findings pursuant to Section 246.6B of the zoning bylaw. Conditions: The plan shall be constructed as approved. Either the principal dwelling or accessory apartment may be rented, but not both. Neither the principal dwelling nor accessory apartment shall be used as commercial accommodations at any time. An affidavit shall be submitted annually to the building commissioner, signed by the property owner, attesting to the condition number three. Construction activity shall not cause erosion, dew, or sedimentation onto the abutting properties or the town right of way. The project shall meet all applicable standards set forth in the Building Code. The applicant shall contact the engineering division for address assignment prior to issuance of an occupancy permit. Upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this residence per Section 99.1 of the Town Code.
You've read the motion, is there a second? Second? Jim?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All set? Fine. Moving on. Next, we have Falmouth Resorts owner LLC, site plan review application to modify the existing site by constructing four townhomes, duplexes over the existing tennis courts and converting a portion of the existing office building into an additional unit. This modification would add nine units to the existing 263 units resulting in a 272 unit resort hotel located at 350 Quaco Road. And once again, we have a positive decision that we requested. And are you willing to go again?
Oh, sure.
Thanks.
Draft 11/26/23, motion that the planning board votes to approve the application of Falmouth Resort owner LLC to add a total of nine commercial accommodation units to the existing hotel under Section 240-12.2, site plan review of the zoning bylaw. Findings, the owner, the applicant Falmouth Resort owner LLC is proposing to construct four, four-bedroom townhouse-style duplexes, duplexes units over the previously existing tennis courts, create one unit with four bedrooms in an existing, in an existing nearby building on the property, add 10 parking spaces, and complete a number of landscaping and lighting improvements. The proposed duplexes and the single unit would be accessed through existing driveways and parking lots. Currently, the project requires 362 parking spaces per Section 240-14.1E parking and the applicant is proposing to construct an additional 10 parking spaces for a total of 373 parking spaces, 13 of which will be accessible spaces. The applicant submitted revised lighting and landscaping plans that aim to address abutters' concerns related to light spillage and noise from these new units. The applicant has committed to investigating Tolar Abidis along the coastal bank and requiring and acquiring with the conservation commission as to the removal of the existing boardwalk. If future changes come to fruition, the applicant will modify the site plan review's approval. The board finds the plan to comply, to comply with regulations of Section 240-12.2D of the zoning bylaw. The board has granted the applicant's waiver request for the traffic analysis and the coastal pond overlay district development impact analysis. The planning board finds that the information provided by the applicant conforms to all the requirements and findings pursuant to Section 240-12.2 of the zoning bylaw. Conditions: The plan shall be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board to determine if a modification of this decision is necessary. The applicant shall investigate Tolar Abidis along the coastal bank and ask the conservation commission about the removal of the existing boardwalk and if changes are made to the submitted plans, the applicant shall file an application to modify the board's approval.
You've heard the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? I would like to say that there was a lot of interest among the abutters in this application and the applicants made a real good faith effort to try to do what they could to meet their concerns. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's approved, thank you. Now, those were easy to do because we had heard them and were ready for them. This is new. We'll have a public hearing. The applicant is Stephen Marsh, who I believe is here. Preliminary plan application to create a three-lot subdivision at Zero Old Barnstable Road. This is a preliminary hearing.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yeah?
You had said that you were going to pull the Seapit special permit extension above this application.
Oh.
Modify the agenda order.
Right, sorry. He's coming after this. This is, isn't, Kevin, aren't you speaking on this one?
No.
Not speaking on it. They've asked for a continuance and it's just an administrative matter, so.
I thought we were going to do it after.
Before this one.
Doesn't matter.
He's not speaking for the Catawba one.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I was confused. I thought we were going to take this afterwards rather than before, but we will hear now. Let's start again. This is, the applicant is Cove Cottage LLC and 108 Seapit Road LLC, asking for a continuance. Would you like to?
Nothing to add beyond the fact that we are requesting a continuance. Bob Amet had submitted it. I am, I'm here pinch hitting on his behalf because he's traveling today. I was here for the decision earlier, so I told him I'd be happy to cover it, but a request for a continuance has been filed. I think Jed's looking into some issues and Bob in here and dialogue about the matter moving forward.
Jed, did you want to speak in? As I understand, there's no issue with it.
Well, there's two items that you'll want to consider. First, it's an opening of a public hearing, so it's important that we do read the notice into the record. And the continuance request is to continue the matter to January 9th. And so what they're doing, asking for the board's approval of is just to continue the matter to the 9th and then we'll go through the details of it at that point.
Okay, Paul?
No.
Yes.
Public meeting notice for this item was published twice, on November 10, 2023 and November 17, 2023. Thirty-one abutters were notified by regular mail.
And then if the board is so inclined, you may vote to approve the request to continue the matter to January 9th.
January 9th?
Correct.
Request to do that, what, Bob, would you make a motion?
I move that, I move that we accept the requests for a continuance to January 9, 2024 for the Cove Cottage LLC and 108 Seapit Road LLC, request to extend the special permit decision issued on October 21, 2020.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We're at my, one of my favorite times of the year, which is, it is the holidays, but it's also the time where we can start saying, let's circle back after, after the, after the new year. And it's a special day when you can start saying that, so thank you guys.
Yeah, right, thank you.
Anybody else dying in here?
All prepared for a winter weather.
That was Jed, just saying.
Jed, don't do that again.
It's my fault, I apologize.
Public hearing, we have a notice.
Public meeting notice for this item was published on November 10, 2023 and 14 abutters were notified by regular mail.
The applicant is Stephen Marsh, preliminary plan application to create a three-lot subdivision at Zero Old Barnstable Road. Who is going to present this? Are you going to?
Yeah.
Yeah. Madam Chair, if I might, full disclosure, I and Steve's late wife went to college together. We were very good friends. I've had no interactions with Steve on any building matter in forever, but I do know Steve from Acton.
From where?
See what I mean? Told you.
Again, if I may, Steve Marsh, I'm the applicant for Zero Old Barnstable Road. In actuality, it's actually at the end of Catawba Lane, it's a 10-acre parcel. This is a preliminary plan, we just wanted to kind of get the lay of the land with regard to, obviously the abutters are very concerned, but we think that we have the right to access this and subdivide it into three lots. Just, this isn't anything arbitrary, I looked at it, I've done projects like this before, I'm comfortable with the language that's in the deeds that allows us the access. So if you can just indulge me for just a moment and just assume that I'm telling you the truth, obviously, at some point, if they disagree, we'll end up in court, most likely. But the amount of work that we've done on the project already, I already have septic plans for all of them, approved. I've done natural heritage with regard to wildlife and the rare species that are there, we're not doing anything near it. We've also done work with regard to the fact that the wildlife habitat species, which is a whippoorwill, which is a bird, is very far off in the back portion of the property and we don't plan on doing any work near that. The stubs for the utilities, we've already applied for, water department, the electric, we've applied for, we've pretty much done everything except for the planning board. Again, so that's pretty much what we've done up to this point. We've done everything except for the planning board. So I think the big issue would be, you know, the 500 feet and whether you want a cul-de-sac versus a tee and what the options are for that. So I will state for the record that originally I came in and talked about doing one lot on this project, I'm still open to that, if that appeases the abutters. If it doesn't, then we're prepared to go long-term and see what we get, because if we have to spend money, we're going to end up trying to offset it by going for the additional lots, which we feel we have a right to do. And that's pretty much it for my presentation.
It seems to be on a lot of overlay districts and wildlife and.
Yeah, and none of them really apply to us because of, so like the Wildlife Corridor one doesn't apply to us because we're not working towards the back. There are no wetlands, I've already gone through conservation, we did get a negative determination of applicability, so we have no wetland issues. As far as the overlay district for Waukewatt and the, the water, the aquifer, we don't have to do anything. I spoke to the Board of Health and there was some discussion with regard to how, because of the nitrogen reduction, it's 10,000 square feet per bedroom on this, and I said that we would be willing to do a nitrogen reduction system on these, and he said not to do it at this point in time because it's probably not going to be necessary because they're anticipating doing sewer over in that area anyway, or in that general vicinity. So, but we did offer it, we're not opposed to doing it. If a planning board feels so inclined to say, look, you know, we want to make sure that there's nitrogen reduction, we would do that if you wanted to make it a condition.
This is a public hearing, I think before we have comments and questions from the board, we'll hear from the public. If you wish to speak, I assume you're the abutters, if you wish to speak, you need to come to, to the microphone and please give your name when you do. The microphone is what connects us to FCTV.
Hello, I'm Ron Reif, I live at 14 Catawba Lane. I have copies of some packets that I've prepared for you. I don't have enough for everybody, I apologize, I've never been to one of these, but there may be a half dozen there, or maybe five, I'm not sure. So I just want to talk a little bit about my introduction to Steve Marsh. So he's had several contractors access the Zero Old Barnstable Road through our private way and our property, never asking us for permission. On one occasion, before work, I talked to one of the contractors and got Steve's number and called him. And what, what Steve's told me was consistent with what he's showing there, but what he also said to me was, you're not going to like it and I've, I've gone through this before and I always win. Steve mentioned that he's, you know, jumped over a lot of hurdles and he's done his due diligence, but what he has failed to do is ask any of the landowners on Catawba Lane for permission to access Zero Old Barnstable Road, which is a landlocked parcel. The handout that I gave you, I'll just go through it quickly. The first page is a letter where we are, we're all basically saying we do not give Steve Marsh permission. The second is a Google map photo which shows that Catawba Lane is actually a cul-de-sac. It's not a stub. It's not a stub like this. I've lived there for over 20 years. It's always been a cul-de-sac. It's not a stub like this.
Could you, could you use the microphone, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Do I need to repeat all that?
No.
So three attorneys have advised me that Catawba Lane is a private way. The first one is the late Catherine Harity, who recently passed, and she was the attorney when we closed on the property. Why did I buy Catawba Lane? Because our daughter was 10 months old at the time and I just fell in love with a cul-de-sac for the safety of it. She said it's a private way. Basically, people can't come in there and get access to that land because I specifically asked her about it. The 300 Committee approached me, Jessica Rittenhour, because they wanted access to this. And they said, as a condition of their purchase of the parcel, they would, they wanted to put a parking lot in. And I said no. And Jessica said, well, that ends the discussion because we need your permission. Part of this packet is the report from the 300 Committee's attorney, and you'll see on there that there is no, there is no access granted to that parcel without permission from the owners of Catawba Lane. I also hired Jeff Nickerson of Oppenheim and Nickerson, and he reviewed all of the real estate transactions, including land court decisions, and he said that there is no access to that parcel via Catawba Lane without permission from the landowners of Catawba Lane. Now, all three attorneys have also told me that the landowners on Catawba Lane own to half of the road. We own to half of the road.
Could you mind if I ask you a question?
Certainly.
And do you understand that the planning board doesn't have jurisdiction over the legal issue that you're discussing?
Well, this is interesting because everyone I've approached in town hall is unwilling to advocate for, the people that have lived on Catawba Lane paid taxes on Catawba Lane for decades. So, you know, who is going to advocate for us? I mean, I'm willing to take Steve Marsh to court, but why isn't the town willing to listen to landowners right now on a private way? I mean, is this just going to sail through and you're just going to give him permission to dig up our road, to cut down trees that we own to get into his land? It's not his land yet, he, he needs to get through all this before he puts the real money down.
We're not going to give them permission to do that because we don't have the authority to do that, because we don't have jurisdiction for that issue.
So, if I, if I may continue.
You may, but I just.
Thank you.
Want it really clear that.
Yeah.
That's not our issue.
Well, I, I'm going to approach every group in town hall that's part of this, that touches this decision, and I'm going to confront them with the same information.
That's fine, and this is your moment to do that.
Noreen Stockman wrote me an email and said, per town GIS records, that Catawba Lane and Monhegan are private. I also served all the neighbors of Catawba Lane, Steve Marsh, with a no trespass order. And we have a return receipt from his agent, signed, and I filed this with Falmouth Police Department. So if we see contractors showing up on behalf of Steve Marsh, we're going to have them removed and arrested if we have to. So there you have it.
I understand the problem, we're just not, the place to solve it.
Sure, I mean, I'm going to keep going to these meetings until I find the right person who's willing to step up to the plate. I mean, someone is eventually going to, I don't know if it's the building commissioner, is going to sign off on all this. So there's a paper trail which leads to that and there's a permit process, but all of this is part of it, everyone here is connected.
I understand that, I just, I actually live on a similar private road leading to a big piece of undeveloped land. You have my sympathy, but we don't have the authority to deal with this particular problem. We are, we are interested in hearing the things that we do have some control over.
Short of, short of taking Steve Marsh to court, can you tell me what the process is working with the town of Falmouth?
I can tell you the process working with the planning board. Okay, what we, what we can do is listen to what you have to say, this is a preliminary hearing, it's not your definitive plan, chances are, we would want you, before you go to the expense, anyone goes to the expense and difficulty of a definitive plan, responding to all the concerns with the preliminary plan, that they would solve the legal problem because we can, but we can condition what we say to, you can't do anything till you solve it. So that's as far as we can go with it.
What's the next step after this?
So after this is a filing of a definitive plan. So this is the rough drafts, the final plan gets submitted within a certain amount of time, and then the board has a certain amount of time after that to take action on it. Once that's finalized, then it moves forward to building permits.
And Jed, I've spoken to you a few times and I appreciate all your help. The town attorney is aware of this?
They are.
Okay. Okay. That's all I've got, thank you for your time.
Well, you're welcome, it's just, you know, we all have a lane we have to stay in.
Yep.
And, and we try to do that.
I'm willing to go into whatever lane I have to.
That's where you are.
Yeah, and that's why I'm here.
Yeah, thank you for taking the interest to protect where you live. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
My name is John Gibson and I'm here to represent the Cape Cod Beagle Club, which has the longest piece of property adjoining the proposed.
I didn't hear what you're representing.
Cape Cod Beagle Club.
Cape Cod Beagle Club.
Oh.
Has the longest property boundary against this. This property, Torres, is landlocked as it's obviously, and a lot of people have approached, a lot of people have tried and. And a lot of people have approached, a lot of people have tried and do something with that over the years. Beagle Club has been approached by both the representatives of Torres, by the Falmouth 300 Committee. But we're trying to keep that property, our property at least, as pristine as possible. There are a number of perspectives I could deal with. I'm only going to deal with one this evening. And I've got to give you a little historical perspective on this to lay the conceptual groundwork for it. 1978, the Town of Falmouth was growing considerably. People were moving in, homes were being built. The Town Water Department needed additional water supplies for the town. Long Pond was not going to cut it. At the top of the list was the Fresh Pond Well Field and Well Site. They did not have any property. They needed to take land by eminent domain. They had to get from Carried Shop Road down to Fresh Pond. They had to take two pieces of property. The larger piece of property was the one that got close to the pond, and the final piece of property was owned by the Cape Cod Beagle Club. Both had to be taken by eminent domain. And here's the first major curveball in this whole thing. At that time, the Town of Falmouth had three selectmen operating the town. One of them was Lenny Costa. He was picked by the town to be the point person on this, for the reason I'll tell you in a moment. The Cape Cod Beagle Club's longtime, from the 1940s into the 1970s, secretary treasurer was Gil Costa, his older brother. So the two had a relationship. And the two got together and tried to work on this. The first problem that came up was the town had planned on buying this land by eminent domain, and they set aside money through the assessed value. But they found out when they went to the appraised value, they were a little bit short by about $10,000. In those days, there's a lot more than now, but still $10,000. So Lenny and Gil Costa got together and came up with a plan that the town accepted and the Beagle Club accepted. And what it was, was this. They would have enough money to buy the big piece of property getting from Carried Shop Road almost down to Fresh Pond. They would give the Cape Cod Beagle Club much less money, only around $3,000, instead of the two acres of waterfront property, which was appraised around $13,000 or $14,000. But they would give the Cape Cod Beagle Club an 85% property tax abatement in perpetuity. Town loved it because they were able to build the thing quickly. They liked it because they stayed under budget. Beagle Club loved it because they got the long-term property tax abatement on that. It was considered win-win. At the same time, in 1978, something else was happening. The town needed, at that point, to protect the upstream, and I'm talking about the flow of water coming into what was going to be the Fresh Pond Well Pumping Station. They had a need to kind of match up with the Beagle Club because we had three or four members out of our 40, we cap at 40, 40 members. So, you know, we could sell our 150 acres for many millions of dollars, retire, get our hunting camps in Maine, and we'd be all set. The vast majority said, "We're not doing this. We've got to protect the land." So the town and the Beagle Club again got together through Lenny Costa and Gil Costa, and they took advantage of the conservation restriction, which was just enacted in state law a couple of years before that. And they established a conservation restriction on that property for the purpose of protecting the land in perpetuity with no development, so that the water quality and the direct upstream flow coming into the well pond fresh site, pumping station, would be pure. So that was also accepted. The Cape Cod Beagle Club has got two property tax abatements totaling 95%, which is between $60,000 and $70,000 a year at this point the town is deferring in order to maintain complete non-development of all the upstream property. If you look at the Torres property, it sits absolutely in the crook of the Cape Cod Beagle Club. We have property, we have flow coming through our property, going through the Torres property, coming back into our property, coming right down to the Fresh Pond Well Site. The other thing I'll mention is just recently, they had to go, the town spent major money refurbishing and restoring the Fresh Pond Well Site because of the presence of percolate in the water coming. And they think it was probably from the fireworks at the fairgrounds about 30 years ago that worked its way down. But that also indicates the direction of the flow. So the town has spent well over $1 million to have a pristine condition of the land directly above and directly upstream from this Torres property. They spent a lot of time, talked to a lot of people, trying to develop this property, but it's sitting in the wrong place at the wrong time in that respect. If we did have one or three properties developed, what we would see with the development of lots and everything, we'd be seeing insecticides, herbicides, fertilizers, the sewage nutrients, the hormone stimulators, antibiotics, and things like that going into it, the very thing that we're under severe conservation restrictions on the Cape Cod Beagle Club from doing. It seems, and I'll close with this, it seems extremely ironic that town would make this massive effort to protect that particular pumping station and the upstream well site over many years, so that we can't do anything, it's just completely protected. Yet they would turn around and put three homes occupied 24 hours a day, seven days a week, with stuff going into it, right above the pumping station. Now, I don't know if the right-hand part of the town that deals with water quality has figured this out, or deal with the left-hand of the town here this evening, but I suspect that there's going to be some increased interest on the part of a number of parties dealing with water quality issues on this. I'll be open for any questions you might have in the future, at this time, or whatever.
Mr. Gibson, is the nine-plus acres that we're dealing with here tonight within the conservation area that's protected in perpetuity?
No. It is nestled within. If you actually look at the Cape Cod Beagle Club, it comes down, it has a crook where it makes a sharp angle. This property sits right in that crook. So we are, our property sits both upstream of it and downstream of it, and the water flow goes down through this property. And I think this is an issue that has not been figured out or addressed, and it should be factored into any decision that is made, relative to the long-term decision on it.
Uh huh.
Anything else?
Any other questions for Mr. Gibson? John.
My only question would be to Jed, maybe he doesn't have the answer, but could check into it at some point, whether or not the Torres family has had abatement of their taxes all these years, or have they been paying full property tax for their values?
I don't know offhand, but we can check into it.
Okay, thank you.
That did.
That was interesting information. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak tonight? Mr. Marsh?
I'd like to respond just to a couple of things.
Okay, go ahead.
Again, just reiterate, proposal for one single family. I know Mr. Reif was concerned about the turnaround. That's a temporary turnaround. It's on the town plan, and the town map does indicate that the stub is there. Someone told you, Mr. Reif, that, you know, they couldn't do something, you might have a case against the lawyer that told you that. As far as the 300 people, I hired the same title examiner that Mr. Reif had told me, that he had hired for the right-of-way. They came to a totally different conclusion. That's what precipitated me proceeding with this. And, but other than that, I think if, I'm proposing one single family, I don't think that would protect the Beagle people. He's right. We're not in any, the Torres piece is not in any protected area, and they are paying full boat on their taxes, because I'm paying them. So, and I just paid, there was an issue today, and I did pay the last one. So the taxes are all paid up.
Thank you.
With regard to that. So, like I said, the one lot is definitely on the table. I don't think one lot with nitrogen reduction would take care of the issue that the Beagle Club mentioned. So we're amenable to that.
Any other member of the public want to comment this time? Okay, board question, Jim?
Jed, it's just, being preliminary, is this the time where the applicant would give us the list of the waivers that they'd be looking for for the subdivision, or that comes with the definitive plan?
Definitive.
So what are we looking for, other than just the introduction that we've already had tonight? Is this it?
That's essentially it.
I just wondered how far we're supposed to go, but those are the questions that we usually do on planning board stuff, comes the next round.
Correct. Now, I did mention a couple of things in your staff report, specifically the profile plan. You may want to just highlight that.
It is actually, the profile plan is on, it was on page two.
Yeah. So right now, the proposal is for, I think it's the next page?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, there it is there.
The cross-section includes two nine-foot travel lanes, which is not in conformance with your rules and regulations. So I just encourage the board to have a conversation with the applicant about, you know, your feelings on the matter. If you're okay with that, then the applicant would submit a waiver request. If you're not, you'd prefer something bigger, obviously have that conversation.
Do you want to comment on that? The material we were given said that it matches the size of the road that it would connect to.
Yes, correct. So that was, and then we would ask for the waiver for the sidewalks as well, because there were no sidewalks on Catawba. But we're happy to do it. You know, the other thing too, is that Catawba, it is a private road in some respects, but our legal argument would take that into account. We're not going to get into that tonight, but right now, the drainage and everything on Catawba is not functioning. Those catch basins are full of dirt and stone and do not function. So the maintenance of that road has been neglected. If we get in there and we're allowed to do this, we would be willing to correct at least the portion that we would be responsible for tying into.
Can you elaborate on what that would be, the extent of the abatement?
Excuse me. The process is, if you wish to come forward and ask your question to the board, you may do that, but you may not speak to one another directly. It's just not how it goes. So come forward.
This is actually a question for Steve Marsh.
Through the board.
Okay. So I would agree that the drywell at Catawba is not functioning. There's two of them. One is functioning fine. The other has a bit of a delay. It will eventually drain, but it's essentially a failed drywell. So what are you offering to do for Catawba Lane in terms of the drywell? And if you tear up the pavement and stuff like that, I mean, what are you proposing to do?
Could I just say that there's a lot of work that needs to be done between your people and the abutters? And I think that you would be doing that before you come back with a definitive plan.
I'm only asking because he brought this up.
I'd be happy to answer it, the board. Let me do that, take me two seconds, just to answer it. If you look right here, Ron, that would take care of the drainage. It's an infiltration system that would run onto my property. It would take the drainage from the street and run it to here, and then sort of back into the ground.
That doesn't have gradient lines, so I can't verify what you're saying.
Okay. I'm going to stop this now. Yeah, this is way beyond a public hearing thing. I think that you know that you need to do some talking between the proposers and the abutters before you come back. Any other things the board needs to ask? Jed?
There's just a couple of items. So because the subdivision is located within the Wildlife Corridor or the Wildlife Overlay District, what we will suggest that you have in your decision is a recommendation that they consult with the Marine and Environmental Services to just make sure that any work that they're doing, they sign off on beforehand. And that's just a simple consultation with Chuck Martenson over at that division.
Well, I may not have read carefully enough what you gave it was, but I didn't see in there where there was going to be a really close review by the wastewater management people dealing with the drainage down to the well. That seems to be a new issue.
Well, yeah, so as part of the definitive plan, the applicant will need to submit drainage calculations that will be sent to our engineering division. The engineering referral is included in the staff report and in the packet, and the applicant did receive it. There's an indication that there may be more than an acre of disturbance, which would actually trigger a stormwater management permit through our engineering division. So again, we'll fold that into your draft decision or your draft motion for the next meeting, if you so inclined. But to have those items outlined as recommendations for the applicant to move forward in the process, but be aware of those issues that you'll be looking for in your definitive plan submittal.
But I don't recall that we've ever included having an impact on a wellhead. Normally, the impacts the wastewater is looking at is on the road, on other people's property, but not on a wellhead that's nearby and the town has an interest in.
Yeah, I mean, we would typically get that sort of referral from our engineering division, and if the DPW Water Division gives us a referral back, which we did not receive as part of the preliminary phase, we would typically see that. But we can consult with the Water Division before, you know, writing up your recommendation.
Anything else? No? Then I think we'll continue the hearing, because there might be new information.
We can draft up a positive motion for the applicant, or for you, if you're so inclined, so that the applicant can move forward into the definitive stage with those recommendations. We can have it ready for you at the next hearing, or if you'd like us to wait, we can do that as well. It's completely up to the board.
What's the sense of the board?
I will say that all of the requirements for preliminary plan submittal have been met. So all of the information that was supposed to be submitted has been submitted. So I would recommend that you look towards a positive decision so that we can move into the next phase.
Okay. And on that would be, they have to resolve their legal issues before anything else happens.
We would encourage that, for sure.
Right. And their drainage issues.
Yep.
Okay. If you would please do that, then we'll close the hearing. Motion?
Do we move to close the hearing, or to have a positive motion for definitive plan?
Both.
You can do both.
I move both.
Second? Come. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Madam Chair, one last thing, and I apologize for interrupting. For the record, the applicant did request that a continuance or the decision deadline that the board is under be extended to the 15th of December. So you may want to just accept that formally and vote its acceptance. And it has been included in your packets.
Ah, can we find it?
For background, a preliminary plan, the board has 45 days to act on it. However, during that submittal process, there was town meeting, there was Thanksgiving, so a lot of things got in the way. We just asked the applicant for that extension request.
Okay.
Have we asked them for that?
We have, and they've submitted it too.
Okay.
So we just have to ask them. One more background.
I move we accept it.
Second.
For extension.
All in favor?
Aye.
And this is through December 15th?
December 15th, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you all for your interest in it.
So this matter will be before the board again on, no, December 9th, I believe.
12th.
12th, sorry. December 12th.
Will we be getting, is there going to be another hearing then? I don't understand the process, so I have to ask.
So the board just closed the hearing. That means that no more testimony will be taken from the public. But what they'll be doing at the next meeting is reading into the record a draft motion for, basically, approval of the vote.
But there's no public interaction at that event?
Correct.
I think that brings us to our discussion time.
It does.
And first off, for discussion, committee reports. John.
I made that mistake.
At the last zoning meeting, I thought it was over, I started talking. I was quickly reprimanded.
Must be joining the Beagle Club.
Oh, yeah. Do you have a beagle?
Not yet.
Could you take your conversation outside so we can continue our meeting? Committee reports. Done?
Uh, this time.
Everybody? Okay. Planning Board report.
Well, the Planning Department's been very busy the last few days because, as you know, we're now looking ahead to the next town meeting. So one gets done, the next begins, and so technically, your next agenda item is what we really wanted to go through with you in terms of preparing for that town meeting and then addressing the meeting schedule so that we can start publicizing public hearings because we're aware of, in the area, five zoning amendments that may be before the Planning Board, running up to the April Town Meeting. So it's going to be a busy late winter, early spring.
Right. And actually, most of them are things the consultants have been working on, but I think that the board is going to want to look very carefully at the Mr. Cobb ones.
Correct.
Right.
Right.
So, can I comment on that?
There were a couple of items in the town meeting that were approved with funding.
Yes.
That takes the Planning Board to do certain things.
Yep.
And assign those to Michaela. And one is the... And one is the wayfinding plan. And there was twenty thousand dollars approved for that.
Yes.
And the intent is to go to the Cape Cod Commission. I'm just curious why we're going to Cape Cod Commission? Because Solton do it, and they provide services to us, or Cape Cod Commission often provide services to us, because we pay a lot of money to them.
Yep.
I'm just curious how that process... I don't need an answer now, I'd like to put that in the future agenda item.
I could certainly answer it now if you'd like me to. So the reason we went with the Cape Cod Commission for the wayfinding plan, which is, you know, an important topic that the Transportation Management Committee had recommended a few years ago, was because they have done that work in the past.
Did you ask them to be quiet? I'm having a hard time hearing Jed.
So the town of Orleans commissioned the Cape Cod Commission to do that work, and they did a really nice report for them in their downtown Route Six area. And so when we saw that report, we thought, oh, this is great, let's replicate that effort in Falmouth, and that's why we went with the Cape Cod Commission. So essentially, they're serving as our consultant on this project.
The reason I'm following up on this is that there was a lot of discussion on wayfinding when I was on the Transportation Management Committee. And wayfinding is a lot more than just putting signs up telling people where to go.
Sure.
For example, a lot of trucks to come down the various streets, Main Street and so forth, they follow a wayfinding app that brings them down twenty-eighth rather than bypassing another area. So it's a lot more than just telling people how to get from the bike path to downtown.
Sure.
And I would hope that be all included in there.
Yes, it is. In fact, it's not only that, but it's also a public outreach component and design of certain elements, be it pavement markings, signage, banners, et cetera, that can be used to do exactly what you're describing. Communicate to motorists, pedestrians, transit riders, bicyclists, this is where to go, this is how you get there, et cetera. So, yeah, it's a full encompassing report.
It'd be nice periodically to hear what the status of that is, future meetings.
So just so you know, we've just about fully executed the contract with the commission as of today. So likely, within a few weeks, the commission will then start the process of inventorying everything in the downtown area. And so our study area is quite large. It's actually from Locust Street out by the town council's office, if you're familiar with the bike crossing, all the way over to Davis Straits. It's quite substantial.
And how far up Palmer Ave do you go?
We go up to Queens Byway, roughly.
That's it?
I apologize. No, we go up to almost Lakeview.
Yeah, you did.
Up to Lakeview, yep. So it's a...
The signs on Lakeview say no to trucks, but I may not count the trucks. There we have our dump trucks and buses and others coming down Lakeview, but the signs don't work.
Yeah, it's, I think it's gonna be a big process, you know, because there's, as you know, there's three ways to get from the west to the east in this area, so...
Who lives on Lakeview?
Not one that I know of.
There's a school there.
Yeah. Could those be the buses that go down Lakeview?
And so while we're on the topic, and thank you for bringing it up, so there were two other funding articles in the town meeting. Yep, there was the open space and rec plan, so that was...
That was my next question.
Great. So what we now have to do is solicit quotes from consultants to finish up our open space rec plan, which is just the last public meeting and the, what they call the ADA transition plan. So they look at access to all of our conservation and recreation sites in town and essentially assess it for accessibility. They put that into the report, then we can send it off to the state for final approval. So we will be submitting those requests probably in the next week or so. And then the third item was additional money for reconification or zoning amendment work that we're gonna be doing for the next, you know, three to five years, depending on how quickly we can move. And it is sort of ironic, considering, you know, what I said at town meeting, how slowly it can go. And the reason for that is because there are other projects in town which are looking to amend zoning to, you know, accomplish a goal, and those are gonna be some of the things we talk about in the next few weeks or so, which will delay the work that we're doing on the zoning bylaw amendments, such as redoing our non-conforming section. So it's another example of how something can get bumped in the schedule, and we just have to be fluid and flexible.
We don't really have a choice. Did you wanna talk for a minute about what you'll be doing with the new grant?
Yes, all right. So there's all...
I had something as particular, what we were just talking about first before we move on. In particular, I actually attended the zoning board meeting where they were trying to decide whether they had to do a special permit or not for the parcel on Main Street. You know, I thought we were gonna write a recommendation that we, that our board supported that article, and we didn't. I thought we voted as a board to do that. I don't know why we didn't do that. But I just wanted to point out to the board, it would be good if you all watch it, because it is very clear to me that the zoning board feels that parking is their issue, and they really don't care what we think, that they want to push the parking issue as hard as they can. In fact, they came right out and said that they need, that we need more parking downtown, and that they're totally against it. And I feel, I thought we had been educating the other board members that we're overparked, and the only way we're gonna move forward is if we start letting it up, but they have one hundred percent, one hundred and eighty degree difference of opinion on parking on Main Street than we do. And maybe we should get together as a board and decide whether or not we actually support what we voted for, and force them to fight that issue a little harder. They came right out and said that they wanna have more parking on Main Street. And my understanding is we're way overparked, that we have huge parking lots in this town, and it will never solve our housing problems if we just keep making parking lots everywhere. And I thought as a board, we were trying to move away from that, and that's what some of our bylaws were doing, but they have a totally difference of opinion. And if you haven't had a chance to watch the meeting, I suggest you all do, 'cause you might be surprised by us not supporting it, how heavy they came down on parking on that issue. And they came right out and said that they, there's not done yet, there weren't even more parking. It was a comment made by one of the members, I don't wanna go into it, but you all have the, I went to the meeting, you should look it up yourself. But I was really disheartened by how much parking they're trying to push back into it.
Yeah, I mean, to sort of address that, the planning department did apply for and was granted funding to do a parking management plan for the downtown area. So we're excited about that. We haven't really heard back from the state in terms of, you know, where we stand currently, other than we have been awarded the money.
Which the grant is.
Yeah, that's that twenty-five thousand, I believe, twenty-five thousand dollars. So I'm anticipating data collection, because it all hinders, you know, it all surrounds data collection. I think that might get started sometime this early spring, perhaps even the summer. But we need to work out when they do the data collection and how they do it, because to your point, Jim, right now, if you were to walk outside, you might say, yes, we're overparked. But in the summertime, on a certain day of the week, it could be a different story. And I think that talks to...
The old saying, churches on Easter Sunday are always full. The parking lots are full. There's fifty-one other Sundays that you have to deal with. And that's my point, is you look at the big picture and not just the little snapshot in the summer.
But yeah, once that freeze way or walkway between Lawrence is done, you can park at Lawrence anytime. I mean, biggest days of the summer, that lot is practically empty.
I know, we have...
You know...
And public transportation also has to be...
Absolutely.
That really is what needs to be done.
Well, they're all interlaced.
Yeah, we gotta look at it holistically and do it. But that's our battle.
Pam?
Who is the arbiter between the ZBA and us in terms of who has control over the parking?
Well, you know, I suspect I would play a role in that. And, you know, I can certainly consult with the ZBA administrator on the topic, but I think that speaks to some of the zoning bylaw changes that we wanna make or that the board is interested in making with Mr. Codd, the mixed residential and commercial overlay district, to make it clear that your intent was for the board to be the sole permit granting authority. So that'll be one of the items that we...
And they think they still are, regardless of what Mr. Codd says.
Well, that's why we're gonna go back to town meeting on that.
Right. So we're hoping to bring back some zoning, some language changes that make it more clear and, you know, relieve that ambiguity that we currently see.
But you can see where wayfinding plays into finding access to the parking that exists during peak times.
Yeah.
And the new grant that's now going to allow us to hire people to get real data to put behind, and that I would hope, one of the things they would look at, we're not the only seasonal community. Other seasonal communities have grappled with this, and how have they done it? And the other thing we're on the cusp of is we're going, you may not like it, but we're going from being, you know, just a little town to being a more urban kind of an area. And you don't promise everybody a parking space in the city, you just don't.
I mean, try to get into Salem on Halloween. I mean, really, and they make accommodations for that.
Or Lexington on April nineteenth, or any, anything like that, there are...
I mean, they have satellite parking lots and they shuttle people in. Yeah, and geez, I've never mentioned that before.
I mean, I just think people need to know, who do they go to around parking issues? And is it the planning board or is it the ZBA? And we need to be very clear.
Well, what they go to are the zoning rules, the bylaws. So it's looking very closely at those to see, what do they say? Because the strength that the ZBA has at the moment is administering the rules that are there.
Right.
And they call for what Jim has termed overparking. We may all agree with that concerning how much we want to have housing above these units. So we'll take a look at it.
Yeah, and...
But it's in the writing.
I think Jim's describing a situation that an applicant exposed in the zoning bylaw that created sort of this confusion as to how do we deal with an application that is dual-part? And so that's where Mr. Codd's language can be strengthened to make it clear how we've deal with that in the future. But right now, it's unclear to the professionals in the in-town hall, and therefore, there's this sort of, I don't wanna use the word battle, 'cause it's not a battle. There's a discussion about how much parking do you need for this use plus this use? And so that's where this issue is.
They're competing interests, and the competition changes depending on the time of year. But this grant gives us the opportunity to look at it more carefully than it has been in quite a while. That'd be good. But revising Mr. Codd for those who originally wrote it up, we can see where we could've made it stronger and came the next time around. And, oh...
I've got another issue if you finish with that.
Yeah?
Governor Haley announced today that she's gonna put a lot of money into coastal resiliency for the seventeen communities. I was on the coastal resiliency coordinator, we worked coastal resiliency action plan, and we strongly recommended a coastal resiliency coordinator. I've written to the select board twice. At the precinct meeting, precinct two, I raised the issue because they have a position description in the warrants which was approved. But basically, it says they will consider adding this position to the budget in July first, 2024. I spoke to the town manager and I said, what's the delay for this? We've been asking for this for some time. And I understand structurally, it's not clear where that position fits in the organization. I think some thought has to be there, whether it's DPW or planning or a separate entity, I don't know. But there's a lot involved in that. Other towns are hiring people for this position, so it's gonna be very difficult to find someone to fill that role. And now that the governor has taken a big stand on that, it's even gonna be harder. So I don't know what influence you have, but I think it's very important for the planning board that that position be filled as quickly as possible. And perhaps you can use your influence to try to push that along.
Paul, is that usually a planning position?
I'm sorry?
Is that usually a planning position?
Not necessarily. Not necessarily. Sometimes a standalone position, but I don't know how it fits in the town structure, because it encompasses working with all the town departments. So it's sort of independent in a lot of ways, whether it's in planning, whether it's a DPW or someplace else, I don't know. But, you know, the town's gonna lose it, lose if they don't move quickly on this issue. And just to say you're gonna consider it. And I talked to the town manager, so I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but he understood what it was, and we had a very frank discussion after it. And I chose not to bring that up at town meeting, 'cause the point was made at the precinct meeting.
Great. Yeah, I mean, my understanding of the process is you have to create the position, and then you have to figure out a way to fund the position. And so...
Recommendation made three years ago.
I understand.
It's not getting easier.
Yeah.
But you also have to figure out, where does it fit in? I mean, is it a planning issue, which it certainly could be?
Yep.
I don't think it's a ZBA issue. I think it's a very independent, I mean, my opinion.
Well, my take, great.
You don't have anybody to blame, you have to just move it up. Just some authority. But that wouldn't be our problem either, so stay in our lane. Our calendar?
Yes, ma'am.
On the calendar, it says we might be meeting January twenty, no, December twenty-sixth.
Right.
A difficult day for a meeting. So the recommendation is that we move it up till the first Tuesday in January, which would make three January meetings. What do you think of that?
I guess I'll start when you think of it.
Thank you. Do you think that we'll need three meetings in January?
I do, and the reason for that is because we anticipate having to have multiple public hearings for the zoning articles that we're anticipating coming up. So one of them is the Water Resource Protection District, as you remember. The petitioners brought that forward in November. We said we would work on something with them to bring it back for April. We had plans in our working group to bring forward home occupation changes. We really, really wanna change the definitions to bring them back to an alphabetized list, make it a little easier. So we've got a lot going on, and I think it's best that we have as many meetings as possible so that we can accommodate those public hearings. Don't forget, the warrant closes on the twelfth of January, and we need to have our recommendations in by the end of February. So time flies when you're having fun, and we wanna make sure we've got enough time to consider everything.
I'd be all for doing the meetings in January. I mean, we used to meet every week before, so...
I'm all set.
I think January's fine, but not the day after Christmas.
Yeah. John, do you have any problem with it?
No.
No, Paul?
So what date in January?
January second.
Second, okay.
So we just bump it a week.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, okay, so not the twenty-sixth.
What would the dates be?
So we would move the December twenty-sixth meeting to January second.
And then January ninth and January twenty-third, you'd also meet.
Yeah.
Those are right. I do wanna remind everyone, while I have the chance, that your next meeting, December twelfth, is going to be a joint meeting with the Affordable Housing Committee, too. That meeting will start at 5:30 PM. It'll be here in this room. We'll have them for approximately an hour, an hour and a half. Our consultants who are working on the housing production plan will be down to talk to both boards, well, actually, the board and the committee. And then your regular, mouthful, your regular regulatory meeting will start at seven o'clock instead of six-thirty.
Do you mind sending us a reminder about that?
Not at all.
Thank you.
Well, Linda would be happy to do that.
Yes, she would.
I have a question. You mentioned that you're considering changes for home occupation.
Yes.
Where can I find what those proposed changes are, going to be?
So we can...
I'm unfamiliar with that.
We can send them to you.
That'd be great.
Yep.
I just made a recommendation to somebody that they, they buy a piece of property and they should, instead of, they should look at his home occupation there, and I go to make sure what I recommend, that isn't going away. Like Title V's changing drastically, you know, if you don't know what's, people are making decisions on undecided law. Everyone's afraid of what Title V's gonna happen.
Yep.
But they're already making, buying and selling decisions based on laws that haven't been passed yet. So I'm very interested in seeing what's going on with home occupation as well.
Sure. Yeah, and while we're on the topic of, you know, the working group, if anyone's ever interested, there are meeting videos posted for all of the meetings that we've had that I can remember to record. So I've missed two, and I apologize for that. But all of the meetings are posted on the planning webpage. So if you go to the planning board page, on the left-hand side, current projects, reconification, it's all there. We do plan to do some reorganization, but everything's there for folks to see.
And you'll be sending out our drafts for the zoning stuff before the next meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, so we're gonna be seeing those very soon anyway.
Very soon.
So, did you, I don't know, did you send, you were gonna send a recommendation about, I had asked you what we needed to do for Mr. Codd to get through the next bylaw, and you were gonna give, we were gonna get recommendations from you and the town attorney. Have we got yours?
Yes, I just sent those, I think, last week.
All right, well.
Some suggestions.
I missed all last week, I was out of it, so I had COVID for a week.
I'm sorry.
No, it's, 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 it was very minor, but it's the first week of my life that I never went to work, never read anything, never did anything, it was just-
Just Netflix?
It was a terrible vacation.
That's a shame.
Yeah, it's very minor, but it still was positive, you know, I had, I tested positive, so I had to sit home.
Sit home?
Wow.
Bob Leary and I attended an outing for the 7th and 8th grade at Lawrence School about two weeks ago. Bob Porto and others set up the tour on the railroad for three busloads of kids from those grades. And they went from North Falmouth up to Sandwich, lowered the bridge, went over to Buzzards Bay, came back and went out east, east Falmouth, I guess. And it was billed as a environmental study tour for the kids. And a narrator talked about the marshland and how important it was. It was really quite a nice, quite a nice trip. And they've been asking me for information, and I put together a little briefing on the history of the railroad because they're using that for training the kids and if anyone wants to look at it, there it is. Tomorrow, they're going to have the race they did last December where they built these pump cars they used on the railroads.
Yeah.
And they put rubber wheels and two-by-fours, and they did it in front of Lawrence School. Tomorrow, 1 o'clock, they're going to do it in the gymnasium. And they're going to have the races again tomorrow. So I guess it's open to the public, I don't know, I was invited. But they're taking a big interest in the railroad that's going on. Perhaps you want to add to that, Bob, you were on the trip?
No, I don't, I don't have anything to add because it's, it's not on the agenda, so, you know, I don't want to get into it, but.
I enjoyed it.
It was, it was, it was interesting.
It was very, the train was all decorated for the Polar Express, so it was really quite nice. The kids were a little wild.
I hope there'll be a lot of copies of this somewhere.
There's one.
There could be more.
I gave them to the school, gave a number to the school.
Could, could we get one?
Can we call the email so we can all get a copy of that?
Yeah.
Yeah, do you have digital copies?
Yeah, I could do that. I wrote a history of the train coming to Falmouth and I adopted this for kids. Yeah, we can make copies if you like. I didn't know what to do with it. I was asked to do something in museums on the green, it never passed, so. I did a pamphlet and they, they have it in there. But this is summary, it's a little more detailed than school one, but it was easy.
Well, my train's left the station, so could we move on?
Yep, we can. There aren't any announcements except to say we got the grant, we already discussed the grant. That's really good, there was no correspondence. Future agenda items?
So I am working on updating and editing the subdivision regs and the site plan review and special permit regulations, the chapter 300 and 305. So I'm going through it and marking it up, and I'll be bringing it to you maybe at the next meeting.
Wow, that's a lot in the next meeting.
Maybe not in the next meeting. It all depends on my work, how it gets done, because I've been working on it, it's just-
We don't even take lunch breaks anymore.
You know, you have my sympathy, I think that's really sad. So that's good, but we'll need time to look at it.
Oh, yeah, 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 of course.
Any other, anything else?
Announcements, Christmas Stroll is coming up this weekend. It's, it starts at 5:00. And there's, we, we're having, Mike Galley, we're having entertainment at, starting at 5 to 8. So you can stop in after the Christmas tree lighting at 6:00.
Is that on Saturday?
It's on, it's on Saturday. And I would suggest that you come at 5:00 because last year, at 6:20, when the Christmas tree lighting ended, about 500 people descended on Main Street and before you knew it, my place and every place around us just overflowed with like 100 people and then an hour later it was gone. It was like a wave. So we're actually starting an hour before the Christmas tree lighting, so you could come and socialize a little bit beforehand. And we have some live music and, and- I'm not, would you like hot chocolate, Paul? I'm trying to decide, do I, am I going to do hot chocolate or apple cider and cookies? Which would you prefer?
Depends on the weather, it's probably going to be cold, hot choc probably makes sense.
Yeah, hot choc, we can do hot choc.
So this is Saturday at 5:30?
Five.
We're starting at 5:00, yes. The event starts at 5:00. There's music at about seven or eight different events up and down Main Street. The Chamber of Commerce has an event published, it's called the Christmas Stroll, you can go online. I'm not the only one, there's, there's lots of other places that are doing it. It's, the main event is the caroling and the Christmas tree lighting, that, which is on 6:00.
There's a full page in the enterprise that described everything.
The lights go on at the green.
The lighting of the green, so it's, it's a nice event.
When's the parade this year?
Saturday, the very next day.
Sunday.
Yeah, the next day, Saturday, the next day. And we'll be open for the parade too. If it's cold and you want to watch the parade in a warm, in a warm sunny spot, we have that as well, so you could come by again.
But the stroll is really lovely.
The, the stroll is lovely, yeah.
Everybody's in a really good mood, it's families, it's kids, it's really great.
That's Saturday, starting at 5:00.
Right.
5:00?
Yes.
Yeah.
The parade starts at 5:00?
No, Saturday, Sunday's the parade. Parade starts at noon time.
Sunday is the parade.
Noon time and goes to like 1:30.
The town festivities begin on Saturday at 5:00. And at 6:00, they're going to light up the green. That's the thing to be here for. And before that, be at Jim's, free snacks, it'll be great. Okay, anybody else?
I'd like to motion adjourn.
A second?
A second.
A favor?
Aye.
Adjourn, thank you.
Yeah, I want to stroll out of here.
Thank you very much.